All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Sarah, can you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Lloyd Grochek.
Here.
Laura Greenlee Karp.
Here.
Dave Andrin.
Here.
Ben Hanson.
Here.
Ingrid Kohler.
Here.
Sue Springborn.
Here.
Sarah Zeradka.
Here.
And Cassidy Schwer is absent today.
And we have a quorum, so adoption of the agenda.
I make a motion.
Dave makes a motion, Sue makes second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of the minutes.
I make a motion.
Sarah makes a motion second. Dave makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we don't have Zoom anymore, right?
No.
Okay. Anybody from the public? David, you're up. We won't count that in your 10 minutes.
Yeah.
I'm here to speak about Southwood. Lloyd, he put a lot of hours in there. Dave Andrin put a lot of hours in there. Sue Springborn, her husband donated the spreader for spreading the wood chips. And a lot of other volunteers, the city, the people around there. We're up in age, I got arthritis so bad, I can't work in there no more. Last Sunday, there was a buckthorn pole down there. I went down there, and I'm not in favor of using poison. I'm in favor of pulling the stuff rather than the poison because that's the beginning of St. Paul's water supply going through there. And before it was Southwood, it was North St. Paul Park. And we had the name changed, had to go through the DNR, the state, North St. Paul, to have it changed to Southwood Nature Preserve. Then after that, the DNR says you have to have it certified for wildlife. There's a little tag on the Oak Savannah that says it's been certified as a wildlife sanctuary. And we were the first city in North St. Paul to win the LEAP Award because when we first started that, Lloyd helped, we were Japanese knotweed. Dave was there.
Oh.
And that, a lot of hours. But by cutting it and hauling it out, we were doing it without poisons. So that's why the city won, was the very first city in Minnesota to win the LEAP Award. And right now, with not many people volunteering, it's hard to get the young people involved. I would like to see some money put in there rather than leave it go dormant. There's a gentleman, Donna Marini in St. Croix. He has 31 acres, three years. He took, I gave him some seed for his 31 wildlife, butterfly gardens and all that. And all the buckthorn is gone. I was there four years ago, five years ago, and it was just full of buckthorn. He had it totally removed, he hired people to have it removed. I used to hire the people from the workhouse, and they worked hard. They pulled everything. And we would haul it out when I had the tractor, but I no longer have it. And there is grants out there, I left it at the city. There's grants out there for invasive plant removal, I don't know if it included buckthorn. But there's, goats can be used for buckthorn. They've, Maplewood used them, took out the buckthorn. My youngest daughter, she's a wildlife biologist, she says it takes three years or four years with goats before the buckthorn is gone. Because they have to keep coming back and they keep getting the smaller plants. Now, the other method is, when the buckthorn's high, you cut it two feet tall. But you have to come back and you haul that out, and you cut all the branches. That takes two years, maybe three years, cutting all the branches. What you're doing, you're starving it for food from the ground, but you're not disturbing the soil. If there's seeds in the ground, they won't come back. And the other method that the state is using, when they pull the buckthorn out, they're planting a tree or some type of shrub that's for nature that they're putting in there. Now Lloyd and Dave worked on that deck. That should have been treated a long time ago. And that, right now, there's so much high trees and that, that's next to it, it has to be cut out. If those are not removed along, around that lookout, it's gonna start to rot because it's just gonna hold the moisture in there, and all the works can be gone. But there is a lot of people that use that. Now, when the city had the survey on the parks, they never told nobody, didn't come in the letter. I happened to find out by accident when I went to pay my electric bill. I asked for one of those, and I printed off 90-some sheets. I sat down in Southwood, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, two weekends. Forty-seven people filled out about Southwood, how much they need it, they need the woodchip trails, they needed mowed back so you don't have the wood ticks on you when you're walking through, because if the grass grows up over the chips and you walk through, you got wood ticks that can, you can connect with. Now, all those people, out of the, there were 17 of them, come from Oakdale. I says, Oakdale's got a park, I says, why don't you use that one? They says, we got knee replacement, or we got hip replacement. We come over here and walk because you got woodchips. We're not pounding pavement or sidewalks. That's why we need to keep it woodchip trail. A lot of people use it, especially people that's got knee surgery. My wife, she had a hip injury, so it's easier for us to walk in it, but heck, when she has to walk on pavement or sidewalks. So, did you tell me it's done?
No, five minutes.
Five minutes? But anyway, the main thing is, I would like to see some money put in Southwood, not in the other parks. I don't think there is any money designated for Southwood anymore. If there is money, if you don't want to use goats, Ramsey County will have the guys come out, cut or whatever, however method we want to do it. And they're cheaper than the Miracor. When I wasn't in charge of the park no more, Kathy took it over. She wanted the Miracor because that's, she went, worked with the Miracor. It costs more money, they did a rotten job. When they were treating and cutting, they were way ahead of here, and they weren't keeping up with the dobbing on the treating, because you only have two minutes to dob that, cut. That sap goes down so fast on there that you're not killing the plant. You know, stuff like that. The giant Japanese knotweed is just starting to come back, and we found how to treat that and get rid of it by accident. One of the master naturalists, we were out there helping a gentleman, that he found the method, the U of M's been out there, the DNR's been out there trying to find out how to get rid of it. Only this one gentleman did. Vivian, Vic and Vivian who worked there, she turned around and she fell backwards on the plant. Well, Japanese knotweed is like bamboo. When you break it, it opens up like this. And so, we just put the poison around the break. The plant was gone that following spring. The reason why that is, because the knotweed pushes the fluid up, and at night it brings it back. So it's pumping back and forth, it's taking, drawing the poison back. So, I'd like to see either somebody else get out there and young people, get them involved, or money put out there to help clean it up. I hate to see all the work that everybody, all the people around here that did work, go down the tube. Because we got a nice nature preserve, two years. We had the Great Horn Owls. Don Beinek and I put nests up, we had the Great Horn Owls, and people were coming all over, taking pictures. And that, one guy was sitting there taking pictures, and I says, where are you from? He says, I'm from Indiana. He traveled that far for the birders to come and take pictures, because the Great Horn Owls, they call it branching, when the babies get out from the nest and they go back and forth. So, but anyway, I don't know what you can do. That's what I have to say.
Sarah, where are we at with the grant piece? Can you just summarize it real quick?
Yeah, so, when you gave me the document, I did give that to Riley, who would be the one that would have to write the grants on behalf of the commission. And then I've been doing a ton of research on goats from the direction of our city manager, so that is being worked on. Just gonna take a little bit of time.
Mm-hmm.
That's the update that I have.
Thank you.
Otherwise, like I said, the people from the workhouse.
Where's Southwood Task Force on regarding this?
Darrell, he's in charge, I don't think he's doing much of anything. Donna asked him, she says, let us know when you have a meeting or something. He refuses to let us know. And that, so we don't know what's going on. We find out by accident. And that, what's going on, I just found out by accident when they had the buckthorn pole. And I was trying to connect with the one that was in charge, but she left right away. She's part of the task force. You know, rather than cut and treat, they were, they're cutting everything but the buckthorn with the berries. The ones with the berries is the very first thing you tackle before you tackled anything else.
Yep, yeah.
That's the one that seeds everything. We got a party that's on the other side of Margaret on Fourth, they got buckthorn there. I went down, I talked to them quite a few times, but they don't want to remove it. Our patio is all stained blue. We got a new car that was stained blue, because when the birds eat that seed, it's laxative form, and it only spends three to five minutes, and then they dump it. Now, Native American Indians, they would take and dry the berries, and they would steep it, that was their laxative. They would drink the water, that was what the Native American Indians would use.
Sarah, can we get, you and me maybe get ahold of the task force and see where they're at with this?
I talked to Darrell this afternoon.
You did? Okay.
Yeah. So, they don't, because I wanted to know before our, because there's nothing in our budget for the next 10 years for Southwood. And with that said, they have no major plans at this point. They don't meet regularly. I've asked them to have me come to their next task force meeting. Then I also talked a little bit to Public Works today, and a lot of the stuff that, they're not gonna set money aside just for Southwood. Most of their stuff comes out of the general fund for maintenance, like the chipping and stuff like that. Because I have talked to them about several of the trees that, from the last couple of storms that are, you know, we used to call them willow makers, where one tree's falling against another. They're gonna address a lot more of that this fall when everything dries up, so they can get in there with the trucks. So, they're both, they're aware of it. The subject with the goats, there's, we're, we gotta kind of work through some stuff there. The city ordinance is we can't have goats in the city, we can't have electric fence. But being, this is kind of a special thing, I think it's something we can bring up to city council, maybe just making a variance for just that area, that with, you know, maybe for the next five years or something, we can allow that to happen. But like Sarah said, this has got to be researched a little bit more. So, the city is pretty much aware of some of the issues, since now that I'm the liaisons for Southwood, I've been reaching out to both Darrell and the city and stuff. So I'm trying to stay on top of most of that, kind of like what we used to do back in the day, Dave. So hopefully, it's gonna take some time, but we get things turned around. But yeah, I agree, we need younger volunteers and stuff. But there's certain areas and certain tasks that I think between the task force, we're kind of hoping they would come and say, hey, we need this, so we can tackle it properly. You know, they have to come up with some kind of a plan, bring it to us, so we can bring it to city council and do it through the proper channels. So, but the Public Works is aware of some of the issues that are out there, and as time warrants, they are gonna be taking care of some of those.
The turtle crossing signs, I went to the DNR, and I got the turtle crossing signs here to begin with, and somebody stole one of them, so the city had some small ones. But the agreement at the time with the DNR, they have to come down in the fall and go back up in the spring, because people get blindsided. Oh, it's not something new. Now, with the turtles crossing, rather than tunnel under there, there is curbing where the turtles can crawl over that. It has to be lowered, it's, I forget what they call it, but it's where rain or, it's almost like when you enter your driveway.
Yeah.
But if they do, there's two spaces where the turtles cross, just both sides, because that would be cheaper than digging up and putting turtle crossing signs in, because then you have to fence it off like they did on Marini and St. Croix, that takes two years before you educate the turtles, they have to go under the cover. This way would be easier for them. There's a lady that's been out there picking up the turtles and moving them. Donna's been down there picking up the turtles and moving them. They're on the move.
I've moved three this year myself.
Yeah.
And just, just so you know, because I drive that almost every day, I've only counted three turtles that met their demise.
Yeah, everything is down.
Not these huge numbers that somebody's been reporting. But I personally have helped three turtles across. The one was napper, he didn't like me helping him, but I did help, and he, he had a different attitude, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm, since this all came to light, I'm, I monitor that a lot more than I did before. I think what does help to a certain point is the speed limit sign there.
Yeah.
People see that, and any kind of slowdown, so they're, they're not going through there as fast as they used to. And we still have a few, there's some people, doesn't matter. But as far as the fatalities of turtles, I've only seen three this year.
Yeah, this down from last year, last year was terrible. But, I mean, just by the curb, rather than come up like this.
If it was more slanted like the, by my neighborhood.
You know, and there's two stretches, or let's say you go from that one stretch all the way here, that's cheaper than digging up the roadway and doing it the other way.
That would be something I think would have to be brought up.
To the county.
To the county, because that's a county road.
Yeah.
So, that's something I guess we can look into.
We also talked about the turtles at the last meeting, and it's kind of out of our hands and up to city council at this point.
Yeah.
And they, it sounds like they've had multiple conversations about it. So, we can definitely bring that idea to them, but it's definitely something that they have been talking about.
Yeah, they need to take down the signs though in the fall. I was, I go down there and walk once in a while. I told Donna, I said, I'm going down to walk. Down there and walk, I come back, oh, I was kind of disappointed. She says, what in the world happened? I says, you went for a walk. I says, yeah, I went for a walk, but I had a turtle pass me.
David, anybody else got any comments or questions?
I do. Um, this may sound naive, but why can't yourself or other citizens just put up the turtle signs and take them down? Why does the city have to do it?
They have to be stored on city property, that was the agreement with the DNR.
Do they have to be that fancy, a formal sign? I mean, I've seen some pretty, just...
There's a kid went up at Joy Park.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like a kid drew it.
The agreement was, because Mayor Sandberg was here, we took a picture, I got the picture of it, and the lady from the DNR, that the agreement was that they go up in the spring, and they come down in the fall, and that's, city has to maintain that. That was, that's all I can tell you on the agreement, because I went, did a lot of chasing around with the DNR to get turtle signs to start with.
It just seems to me that'd be so simple. So, to have a simple sign and go out and put it...
We could look into it.
Yeah.
So, and, and the, the formal, the ones, the DNR signs or whatever, how, how much time does it take to, are we talking about just simply removing a sign off a post? Or we're not talking about removing the post from the ground?
Two bolts, and I, if I looked at them, there was probably a special wrench for the...
It just kind of needs to be on our radar, on the city's radar, maybe. It doesn't sound like it's a big.
No.
Problem for the city if it, we just probably need to remember it somehow.
Is this something Sarah could take back? I just, sorry, I just want to be conscious of time, because we have a lot of things to talk about tonight, and Southwood is very important, but if we can't fix it at this exact moment, like being able to, we have a lot of topics, we don't want to like pass off till the next month for budgets, so.
Pass it on to the.
Yep.
Public Works?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, I understand HGA is unable to make it tonight due to conflicts.
Correct, yes.
So we'll jump to code of conduct review?
Yes, and I will hand that over to Riley.
All right, thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, I need your sunglasses.
So, this item was requested to be on tonight's agenda. It is a code of conduct review. I don't know when this was created, it looks rather old, do you have any idea? May, maybe due for a refresher at some point in the near future, but this is something that I historically have done with my commissions at my previous city. Each year, beginning of each year, we just quickly review the code of conduct amongst commissioners, staff members, and members of the public. It's always a good refresher. You know, you like to think that you know these things and want to abide by them, but sometimes you don't, and so it's always, it's always a good idea to just quickly review them. Essentially, what the code of conduct is reviewing is, it spells out the respect, integrity, equality, communication, esteem, regard, behavior. That's what this document shows, that we need to all have for one another, whether you're a staff member to a commissioner, commissioner to commissioner, staff member to commissioner, member of the public, any which way you can possibly think of, is, we need to be very mindful. You know, each of you has a very different perspective when it comes to where you've been, where you're going, various life experiences. All of them are incredibly valuable, that's why you're here, that's why you were on this body and a member of our local government. But we need to remember that we need to be respectful of everybody, even if you have different life experiences from somebody else, that doesn't matter. You're, you are all here to, for one common goal and one common good. So, there's no formal action on this here this evening, it's just meant as a, as a good refresher for you. Moving forward, I think this is something that we should review at the beginning of each and every year, especially if we get new commissioners on, you know, people come and go, it's always a good idea to review something like this, so. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, CIP discussion?
Same thing, I'll, I'll hand this over to Riley. Start.
So, let me pull this up. So, in the, in the packet, it looks like we have the park, 2022 Park Improvement Plan. Obviously, this document was created well before my time, before I, before I'd been here. Sarah, how much involvement did you have on this document?
Zero.
Zero, great, okay. Excellent, so let me find out where my page starts here.
I think everybody on this commission, whether past or present, has been involved in the building of this.
Except I think maybe, I don't think Ben. Before your time, before Ben, but otherwise, Ben.
And then...
David was involved earlier. Yeah.
Earlier, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Way back.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, we worked on this with Jill Officer.
Okay.
From a request of, or from council to put together a plan.
Got it.
Similar to what they're asking us to do now.
Now, yep. All right, so beginning on, in your packet on page, I'm jumping all the way to page 99. That is the beginning, I'm sorry, not 99, earlier, 90, was it 97? This gives you an idea of the park and recreation funding for capital improvements. If you do move to page 99, it shows various improvements, and then by year, the funding source, and the amount that we have tentatively placed in each of those years for the, for that particular improvement. And Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, this was essentially boiled down from the 2022 Park Improvement Plan into this CIP?
Clarify what document you're looking at right now?
I'm, I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission packet.
The whole packet?
The whole packet.
99 of 111.
Okay, so it's the pages from Parks Mission, attach the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry about that.
And then, to answer your question, Riley, yes, yes and no. Some of that has been boiled down. My understanding is some of it's boiled down from the Park Improvement Plan, some of it is recommendations from previous, from the previous community development director and from Public Works.
And so, much of the work that we're doing in 2024, so you, you've got the McKnight Fields Master Planning, that amount, and the downtown, and the, let's see, the West End Passive Park, right? Those are the three?
Was it the 60 we paid for HGA covering the three parks, or were there three separate fees?
Uh, no, that covers the three parks, the Phase 1.
Phase 1.
Yeah, but they're separated out 60, 32, so is the 32 and the 31, or excuse me, the 40 and the 32? Because this is 2024, which we're in, and we paid that, but that would be 65 total, not, not 100 and something total, correct? Because we haven't done anything to this.
I thought we agreed to.
I can't remember the exact number, but...
Do you know what line item she's talking about?
McKnight Fields Master Plan?
Yeah, yeah, but Sarah's referencing the Downtown Park Master Plan, 2024, we budgeted The West End Passive, $40,000, but you're saying those should be zeroed out because it's covered under the McKnight Fields Master Planning?
Yep. That's a lot of money. That's some buckthorn pole right there.
Which I think, I think if you see, and Riley, correct me if I'm wrong, but on page, I don't even know what page this was, but the CIP, I think it's page 100, that shows 2025 through 2034, those costs are no longer on there for the Downtown Park and the, so that 60,000 was taken out because we spent it, and then the other two parks are not on there.
Yeah, that, that page 99 looks like it's, it's obviously beginning in 2024, whereas page 100 begins in 2025.
Right.
And so those are removed from there, you are correct, Sarah.
And being we're on that item, are we actually going to put that kind of money into McKnight Fields as it was planned for parking lot and stuff like that? I think this should go towards the new plans that we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than that one line item?
Well, yeah, and as, as we heard in our subcommittee meeting here... Well, yeah, and as, as we heard in our subcommittee meeting here just not too long ago, one of the phases is going to be talking about the, uh, you know, once we have, uh, kind of a plan in place, the next phase then is to talk about, uh, the, the total cost. Those numbers will then be put into the CIP. Obviously, we don't know them yet, so, um, we don't, we don't have an accurate number for that, but that is the plan, correct?
And the reason we're reviewing this is because council asked us to put more information into this document about what we as a commission would like to focus on in an ideal world, so that as they are planning and reviewing the budget process, they have an idea of how we want to allocate the fund balance that we have.
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
So, from being at that council meeting, it seems like they really just want this, what we have here. So is the goal tonight to just kind of walk through this and maybe reprioritize based on what we know today versus 2022? Would that be the easiest way to tackle this? Because I think looking at the numbers is okay, but I think we're going to have to readjust all those based on the conversation we have here.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
I think exactly right, and then adding anything...
Okay.
New that we think...
I don't know what page this is in the packet, but it's 55 in the book. Riley, do you have a suggestion of how far out you want us to go? We have like 1 to 10 years in here?
I, I usually go 10 years.
Okay.
Is typically what I've seen.
Perfect.
Okay, and so then the idea was, at the last meeting, we agreed that each commissioner would have up to 10 minutes, acknowledging that that's a big chunk of time, so if you don't need all 10 minutes, you don't need to fill it. And that we would talk about our thoughts of what we would like to see, and then after each person has shared that, we as a commission would discuss that and suggest what we would like to put onto the document that we are referencing right now, the two-page line item for the 10 years. Does that sound like what we all signed up for?
It's the first time I've heard that. Were you at the last meeting?
I must not have been.
No, I don't think you were.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, if you need more time, you can go last.
I have nothing.
I have nothing tonight, so...
Yeah.
Let me start, let me start over with Ingrid. And what's your liaison part?
Are we talking about, um, physical property? So, things like, oh, I have a wish list for Silver Lake, um, that might include lifeguards someday, but I think that's a different, that's a totally different thing to discuss than physical, you know, like, uh, like...
That's...
Yeah.
Lifeguards is more programming side.
That's a program, okay, right, right.
We're talking capital, physical.
So...
All right.
And just to clarify, the guidance was something, like, not necessarily a hundred dollar fix to a park bench, but more like a $15,000 plus type investment.
Yeah, lar, larger capital.
Yep.
Okay, if we're talking about a 10-year plan, I think the playground equipment, which is on the east end of the lake, or end of the park, will probably need to be replaced at the end of this. It's in great shape. I do not want to get in there and, um, just because it's a certain age, remove anything. I haven't been inspecting it, you know, maybe it should be inspected, uh, by the city, just to, you know, reinforce what I'm saying. But, um, I would say, if it's a 10-year plan, then my wish list for Silver Lake is to have, um, that park structure examined and very likely replaced by year 8, 9, something like that.
It is listed on the 5 to 10 year.
It is listed already, okay.
I don't know if it helps to look at that, just as you're referencing.
What page are you looking at, Sarah?
It's page 65, I think, in the entire packet.
In the packet?
55, if you have the book.
And 65, I got, I got 65, okay. Okay, there it is. Uh, thank you. But I, okay. Got it. Silver, there you are. Okay, great. I have some shoreline, uh, well, I don't think it's buckthorn. I think it's some invasives that have grown up and blocked the view, um, in a couple different places. I think this is a city issue. I've brought it up a couple times, but I've never followed through and gone and met with the city and said, you know, pointed to what I... So I'll follow up with that, but if it looks like we need to involve the county, because it is sort of shoreline-related, or DNR, or who, whatever body, um, I'd like to make sure that, um, there's money in place to, to do that. I, I don't think I need to add, I mean, I have no idea what that would be, and maybe it's, maybe it's a city, um, you know, maybe it's not a park issue.
Would that be a capital thing, Riley, or would that be, uh, more maintenance?
I was thinking that same thing.
Okay, at the same time, I just want to register another concern, and that is, the, the, um, same, and it's under the same category, so it's probably not going to affect our plan. But the shoreline, or the swimming beach area is being encroached upon, um, on the west side of it by more invasives. Um, we're losing a good, like, 10, 10 feet of space, and it's just going to continue to, to do that. So, that's just included in what I was mentioning. So, you know what, I, I, um, if the bathroom building is in great shape, is it, is it currently...
They just redid it, like, two and a half years ago.
I think so, yeah, okay.
Inside of it.
Then I really, we have a new, no, new pavilion down there, uh, new pav, you know, the...
Sidewalk?
Tennis court is great, the sidewalk is fine, great. I do not have any concerns for Silver Lake, other than what we see on here. I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks, Ingrid. Anything else? David?
Yeah, as you see, we don't have anything for Southwood. In Southwood, within the next 10 years, um, we have that metal bridge that goes over the creek. That's going to have to be replaced. It's, it's starting to show its age. Within the next 10 years, we'll probably have to do something with the observation deck. That, right now, is probably good for another five to seven years, but I don't think it'll go beyond that. That was built, uh, quite a few years ago, um, by some members that are on this board now. So, and it was all built with volunteers and stuff, and it's all treated lumber, but, um, it is starting to show its age. It's now getting, some boards are getting the, the weathering, where the boards are starting to, like, crack and open up. Other than, I mean, it's really sound, uh, it was built really well, probably overbuilt in some cases. We built it to last for a long time, but the weather is starting to get at it, and it's something I think we need to address. I don't know if we'll be able to get volunteers to redo it again, um, and then maybe something we may have to contract out.
Do we ever get any requests from the Boy Scouts anymore? Okay.
Other than that, just like earlier, when we were talking about Southwood, I've been in touch with, uh, Public Works. And I've been, I've talked to the task force, like, as of right now, they don't have any major plans or anything. Maybe some plant, plants or something like that, and that's when I informed, uh, the task force, or Daryl, that we have to go through proper channels and stuff. So whenever they have their next meeting, I'm pretty sure I'll be there, so I'll get an understanding what the task force is looking at, and how viable it used to be. You know, it used to be really strong. They were, they were, came to every park commission meeting. Matter of fact, on the task force, we had three people in this room that were part of that task force. Now it's, none of us are. So, um, we're not informed as much of the projects that master naturalists are doing. But yeah, we, I just noticed we had no, no line items for Southwood other than maintenance, and maintenance could run quite a bit. Like, I had mentioned earlier with the storms, we have a lot of trees, so we may have to start looking at planting some more trees in those areas, so...
With your, uh, the bridge and the observation deck, one of the asks that we had, so I'll say this for anybody else I'm speaking to, is kind of a rough estimate or a guesstimate of cost, or what we would like to see money-wise. That way Riley can assess that too and, and put in a, an appropriate number. What would you be thinking for an, a guesstimate on cost for that, roughly?
The, the bridge, that's hard to say. Would we go, we would have to look at what we would want out of there. It's, it's all metal now. It's, it's good probably for another five to 10 years, but then after that, I'm not going to guarantee anything. But as you walk across it, it does bow and it does make noise saying, "Hey, I've been around a while." So I would say, if we were to go with steel, I mean, the price of steel is going kind of up like everything else. So I wouldn't know. I mean, if we were going to go forward, it would be, I could start getting some ideas, but do we want to go that? Do we want to go with maybe, uh, like a wood structure, maybe a little bit more of an arch, that kind of thing? So there we would have to sit down and discuss, maybe with the task force or some of the residents, what they would like to see replaced there. Maybe, I think it should be a little bit wider than what we have now. Only by a foot or two, but if we're going to replace it, that would be the time to do it. But then we would have to check, and I just know this from working on the deck, check with the watershed and the DNR to make sure we can put footings where we need to put footings and that kind of stuff. Uh, the observation deck, like I said earlier, that, I think, cost us less than 10 grand, wasn't it, Dave? And we had a lot of that, the, the labor was all done with volunteers. We could probably reach out to the public and ask for another one in a few years. I don't know how strapped, uh, Public Works, Works is to do, like, even, uh, like an oil treatment on the, the wood. So, I'm sure on today's market, I'd have to sit down and estimate, but I think we could have it easily rebuilt for right around 20,000 to 25,000.
So would you say the steel bridge, maybe regardless of what we do, would be like 5,000 to 8,000?
Oh, yeah, I would say it's probably, we'll probably say close to 10.
So what if we say for both of those, roughly estimating $35,000?
35, yeah, 35 to 40. I'm not, you know, because I don't know exactly, I mean, if they want me to do more research, I could do that.
No, it's just, we're just...
Right, we're just getting numbers.
They want us to put a number on paper, even if it's within 5 or 10,000 dollars.
Because there's, there's no reason to say, "Hey, I need money for wood chips," because the city's already doing that, part of their, their maintenance and stuff. So I talked to them for about 35 minutes today. Hopefully in the next month or so, I'll have more conversations with, like, Ron and such, to find out, get the nitty gritty on that. But as far as any kind of improvement, the city's already going to replace the benches, so that's not a, an issue. But the bridge is something that's not on anybody's radar, and same with the observation deck. So, I would say, we should try to, to be realistic, not knowing what all the costs are. I would say we should actually set aside 45,000 for at least those two line items.
Thanks, Dave. Sue?
Well, I do have something.
Good.
Uh, there's an observation that I've made, um, recently. It seems like, I don't know the term, I want to say dumbing down of our playgrounds. It seems like every time we've put in a new playground, it's for littler kids. And, oh, I'm sorry. It just seems like every time we've put in a new playground, it's for littler kids, and I noticed it because my youngest grandchild, all of a sudden, there wasn't any place for her to play anymore. And I thought, well, maybe that's just the way it is now. Well, we've been spending, my husband and I have been spending a lot of time in Bayport recently, at Bayport Park. Holy cow, you or I could have fun on those playgrounds. It's really, truly. And is, was there a conscious reason to, Silver Lake, for instance, that playground, that used to be a much bigger structure for bigger children, and now it looks like it's for four-year-olds?
Cost.
Is it cost?
The cost of playgrounds is astronomical, so what we could get for, like, in a lot of these places, we had $25,000, and what you get for that...
Ah.
And the reason Casey Lake is as big as it is, is because it was built by volunteers and not, so, Casey Lake Park was a $500,000 playground that we built for 120, because it took five days of people's full-time labor, a lot of people in this room. But that's, the problem is, like, that, a, a good one example is Colby Hills. That's the one my kids would go to, and it's too small, but that playground was, I think, almost 50 grand, and it's not anything. And so, so a lot of it was just budget constraints. That's the sad truth, but...
Yeah, part of me, um, in, in my heart of hearts, would like to see kids stay kids longer. And if there isn't a place for a 10-year-old to play, what's he going to do? I mean, that, you know what I mean? I, I know Georgia, even though she was tiny, my granddaughter, it wasn't fun for her anymore. So maybe it would be worth it to take a playground as, not all of a sudden, but I mean, as we're doing this, consider that and make it a little more difficult for a little older child. If we're change, chasing off the older children, that's not a good thing, in my mind.
I think the answer to that could be McKnight, based on some of the stuff we saw today. But I think what you're saying is just, and what will have to get cleared at city council, is that comes with a really large investment, and it's not a $40,000 playground, it's not a $100,000 playground. It's probably closer to this number that Silver Lake has down here, this is 941. Could be looking at a million-dollar number by the time you get, you know...
I, I know the city that I live in just did, redid one of their main parks, and it's awesome, it's huge, it's, uh, it's all-inclusive, um, type park. It was, it was a million bucks.
Yeah.
Rolls out.
Well, in Bayport, they have Anderson windows, so they have everything, so, it's true, it's true.
I think we just have to say as a, as a commission, like, we all agree with that, and we're going to be, when we, when and if we get this opportunity with McKnight, um, say that we know this number is going to be a lot scarier than we've seen, but figure out whether it's bonding or something else, like, how do we do that so that we can protect the same thing?
Well, you can't make it all inclusive, it's, it's only for four-year-olds.
Yeah.
That's not all-inclusive, so... Um, I have another, um, issue that has been bothering me, um, at Northwood, that I don't know what it is, where the asphalt is. It, I have... Well, it, there's a sign that says, um, roller blades only. I've never seen a child in there, and I try to drive by there quite frequently, and I've never seen anybody in there. And maybe it's only in the winter, but if it's never used, let's rip that sucker out and put something useful in there.
You're talking about the hockey rink?
Well, is it a hockey rink?
Well, it was.
It is technically in the winter, and in the summer it's for roller, ideally it was meant to be for roller blade hockey.
Do we flood it in the winter?
Yeah.
It does get flooded for sure.
It does.
Okay.
Okay, okay. It does, okay. Okay, I haven't seen anybody, that's why. But I'm probably not there.
You're inside, I don't.
Yeah, well, no, I may not be there at the right time, that's the thing, yeah, so, and, uh, that's really all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. I'm going to go jump over to Ben.
Uh, I mentioned this last time, Case, I mean Casey Lake, I'm there all the time with my kids, it's looking really good. I would just propose that we consider, so, there's a map of Casey on page 80 in here. This ball field is the one that never gets used. This one does, I think this one does, and this one definitely does. It's used for practices all the time.
The one in the middle?
The one in the very middle. It's got the creek there behind it, and it's overgrown, it's just never used. So I would love for us to think about something that could be done there in the medium term, um, to make that space. Whether we just do nothing with it and, but, but let, you know, wildlife, um, let plants grow there and build out the, the creek area, which already has some, uh, vegetation around it, or if we actually dedicate it for some other purpose.
I have that on my list, too. So if you had an idea, like, how much money would you want to throw at?
I don't, I mean, to take it out and fill it in with something, we're probably looking at 50, 50 grand at least, and then if you want to do something different, then there's maybe another 50, so...
So like, yeah, so like, $100,000 of...
Yeah, so like $100,000 of re.
Purpusing.
Re, yeah, repurposing that area, obviously, with like community input and all of that process.
Yep.
Finding something useful for that area.
Because just to the south of it as well, you can almost just make it out on this map, there's a, there's a tiny little bridge that crosses the creek there, and it's a nice little area to walk through, but I I don't think a lot of people walk through it because you have to cut through a lot of grass and stuff like that, so it could be made into a, connected up to some kind of trail system if if we wanted.
Would that be a place that we could do like a nature play area if it's by the water already?
It's not usually water in there.
What about dog park, like we were talking earlier?
About what?
Dog park.
How far is it off of?
It's not that close to a parking lot, though, you gotta, people with dogs, I mean, people walk, but you're going to want to be closer.
Right here.
My, what I had actually written down for Casey Lake there was to actually convert that into a soccer field. We have zero soccer fields, soccer is the largest growing sport, we know this, anyone who's in that subcommittee. That seems like a really easy takeaway, both those baseball fields, honestly, convert it into soccer or. The other thing I had, and we heard this at the feedback session, I don't want to take your time, Ben, though, so.
I was going to say.
Yeah. I'll talk about it on my turn.
Okay.
Ben, anything else? Um, no, just people, the way that I see that that whole area getting used most frequently, minus the ball field that I've identified, which again doesn't get used, is the grass areas used, people set up volleyball nets. So volleyball could be another option, they just happily play on the grass, I don't know if they would want sand or not. But that gets used very frequently in this in this warm months for volleyball.
I have to say the volleyball courts at Silver Lake get used all the time. It just seems like, well, not all the time, but frequently at Silver Lake.
Those are sand?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one, one sand court there.
Do they ever use the one at Tower? I don't know who's got Tower Park.
I I've never seen anybody using it, but.
Let me get back to Ben, I'll go back.
That's all, that's all I got.
You good?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, Sue.
Um, I, yeah, I've never seen them used, but again, it might not be the right time that I'm looking.
While we're on the note of Casey Lake Park, and since you're there, on this page of the prioritization table, it does talk about hockey rink improvements. It also has money allocated to the east side of the park, and then for midterm, it's got, to be determined, two and a half plus million dollars. I don't know what that came from, so if we want to just touch on that briefly, how we feel about those numbers as well.
So I can jump in on, because I was the former Casey Lake person. The east side park originally, in 2022, we were talking about this, was actually, we're proposing a fitness area for that, to be like a multipurpose fitness area. I think since the dynamic has changed, but I think what would still make sense in that area, and it would be more than the allotment here, would be like a ninja course or something, where there used to be the, what we call the army park, either down there or on the east side of the park. That was part of it. The 2.5 million, I think some of that was including any building improvements, knowing that 10 years from now, the building would be almost 20 years old, so I think that's what part of, I don't know, the two and a half million seems really high. I think that number is way too high, my guess would be what Ben mentioned, plus any building improvements I think we need to consider, like that means bathrooms, or any things that's going to happen over there. And then we did hear this at the feedback session at the Autumn Art Festival was the people wanting that kind of play, outdoor kind of, I I keep calling it ninja, but you know what I mean, it's like more, I don't have good words. More fun play that isn't necessarily a playground, but it's like bars and monkey bars. Yeah, like kind of active play.
That would be for older.
Older kids, yep, and Casey Lake had the really old version of that, and people got really sad when it was taken down. But that, my my guesstimate, what I had put by Casey Lake was about 200 grand between like soccer fields and potentially ninja play, if you leave the grass there and don't put in mulch or anything like that. But I think my number is probably low, I think two and a half million is high. I think as a group, we have to decide where we want the hockey rinks in the future, and Casey Lake has probably the nicest one. And there's real bathrooms there, but I know we've avoided that project for a long time, just because our hockey numbers have been down, but people still use that, but I think that becomes a conversation with Northwood. If Northwood and Casey Lake are our hockey rinks, we probably need to really, because this was something Keith said we needed to do, and that's, now I'm aging myself.
Like 10 years ago.
Yeah, so that Casey Lake rink improvement probably needs to happen sooner than later if we decide we want to keep hockey.
Larry's been, Larry talked about that many times in the past, too, about the hockey rinks.
Yeah, it's looking old, I didn't mention it because it was already on here, but yeah, the boards are old.
I'm with you that if we spend the money on fixing up that hockey rink, then we need to add an ADA accessible pathway between that bridge probably and that path, because that gets really mucky in the winter when they ice it and the trucks getting back there to like the, we almost need to make almost a service road slash, and then when you're talking about concrete, now we're probably up to 500 grand, so. I would say 500 grand to Casey Lake in the 10-year span, but maybe in the shorter term, you, up to you guys on the hockey, I don't have any opinions on hockey, but if we're going to have it, let's make it usable.
I wouldn't go any lower than 500 grand, because we've talked about a lot of things just now at Casey's, so I wouldn't go any lower than that, Sarah. I don't know.
Yeah, so.
It, we're talking about 10 years, so that's, that's a lot.
Anything else?
I didn't know, was that my time to talk?
Go ahead.
Oh, I have, I have a list, sorry, I was here for this. Um, so first McKnight Fields, I think that, we don't know what that's going to cost, but I think to me that with the downtown parks is going to be, I think, where the money needs to go to besides immediate things. The other park I have is the environmental, what do, what do we call that, environmental?
Learning.
Learning center?
By the bus garage?
By the bus garage, yep. We've talked a little bit about this, but this is actually where I'd like to see the nature play. There's a really nice kind of area, if we clear it just a little bit off the gateway trail, that could be something, I think, beyond just maybe a picnic table, which could be really nice, because I ride that trail pretty far, and there's no place to sit and eat lunch between the community center, and then you're basically into Matamede Eye. So it'd be really nice, just as simple as like a, clear up an area a little bit, keep it nature, I don't want to like concrete this out, but just make something that's visible, especially since they've cleared the road. I'd say this is probably $60,000, $65,000, maybe. I don't want to pave the trail or anything, but maybe just make a seating area, a picnic table, and then maybe some like little play that like kids who are biking, like a bike rack, something that like a family can stop and use that if they're on the gateway. And then I had Casey Lake, which we already talked about, and then my last, I, this isn't my park, but I'm going to talk about it anyways, is Northwood. I had the same question about the rink conversion, do we need it, would we convert it? HGA just showed us a really cool thing where they've taken like old tennis courts and kind of converted them into little BMX slash, not really a skate park, they called it something different, but it was really, looked fairly simple and easy to do, and my curiosity is if we're not going to use that, could we do something with that space and make it kind of like a bike something? And then last thing at, um, Northwood, we've talked about this for so long. Is the ADA accessibility into that playground does not exist, and it's expensive, and but I think we need to do it, and I can't remember what the cost was, it might be like $150,000 to get more of a walking path or some way, there's no way for you in a wheelchair to get to that playground at all, so, or a stroller without going up a hill. So I think that needs to be on the short list of the short priorities, I know it's not my park, but it was just on my mind, so.
I think, Sarah, we talked about, when we talked about that park, we talked about actually moving the playground, I think. Because it's, there's, you have to change the whole contour of the land.
Yeah.
And I don't know that you can push a wheelchair up there easily to get to that playground anyway, especially if it's a larger kid. But if you move that playground down to where that that unused hockey rink is, it would make a lot more sense.
Well, and we've had a lot of conversation about the building, I know there was a lot of money dedicated to Northwood, but potentially fixing that shelter building. I kind of feel like when we talked about that, it was a million-dollar project, and I think if we're talking about a million dollars, I think that could be better spent somewhere else. But I do think Northwood needs a chunk of money, and I don't know, maybe that's just to like X amount of dollars to Northwood for future improvements, but I think it needs to be redesigned or something, like you said, there's just, it's not,
It's awkward.
It's not accessible, it's awkward, it could be better used because a lot of people would use it.
Although, there are always children in that playground.
Yep, no, I, that playground's fairly new, I, we've put it on since I've been here, so.
But it also is a very small kid playground.
Yes, yes.
And I, Northwood is my park, I have grand hopes and dreams for it, but I don't want to take up your time.
No, that's all I got, I'm short. I talk fast, but I'm short.
Okay, so I went to Shoreview's new playground that's across from their community center, and they did this really amazing thing where they essentially created five different parks within one park. And each pocket within the park was a different play structure geared towards, uh, one was older kids and like super tall climbing, one was more of like a tucked away like nature, small contained area. There was a skate park where kids were on their scooters and skateboards. There was a gathering area in the middle of the whole thing, and then there was a ninja warrior course. And all of those things were, like, you could bring any age, including adults, to this playground, and somebody, everybody would have something to do. And so I feel like Northwood is a really unique opportunity because there is some stuff there, but there also isn't a lot of stuff there. And it is in awkward shape, but that awkward shape would lend itself really well to kind of like this meandering tiered level park from start to finish with kind of like a gathering space in the middle. Before Justice Alan Page was created, it used to be Maplewood Middle School, and when school got out, all, a ton of middle schoolers would go and spend time in Northwood. And there wasn't really anything for them to do, and sometimes there was graffiti, but really it was just like a space for them to gather. And so I, and it's an elementary school now, but I also think there's like this tradition of kids spending time there in the middle of the day, so like making it a place where you can sit in a park and talk with your friends, but you can also, you know, play on this playground or do this fun ninja warrior course setup. And so I I know it's not set up to be a destination park, like, we don't have the parking for it, we, like, that isn't going to make sense, but I do think that we can make it like a destination park within uh, like North St. Paul. So like maybe we aren't, we are, we don't have people traveling a half an hour to this park, but we have people actively choosing to go to Northwood instead of just like ending up there because it's the closest park. So I would want to spend a lot of money there, I, I, it's probably like close to, I don't know, 500K to 750K to like really look at it and figure out a way to creatively use it and make it make sense for like all of the different people we're serving. And I feel like it's kind of in an area where we don't have a big gathering space, we don't have like a a more substantial spot, so making it a spot.
Can I just add on, and we've talked about how there's so much development around that park, and no parks are really serving all the new people that are moving into those newer condos and things right along there, so. That's a great idea.
So in the 2022 plan, it looked like for, in five to 10 years, Northwood had 1.43 million dollars. Is that too much, too little, do we want to just keep that similar?
My, I would be inclined to keep it if I'm thinking about the process that we're going through with HGA and just the investment of the 60K to have them help us do more planning. I can see Northwood being a part of a second phase of planning. And so maybe we just budget that planning money to fall under the Northwood line and then see what we can get with the rest.
Anything else, Laura?
Nope.
Thank you. I'm going to make it short and sweet, David, McKnight, that's pretty much on the agenda, so we'll just let that one keep rolling. Southwood, David, could you and I?
We got the same two parks.
You got the same two. Exactly, could you, ditto, 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 could you, could we get in a loop together and then we'll, I'd like to go to those meetings, too. We, I used to go to those, too, and it kind of comes and goes, as you know.
Once he invites me, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got.
Who has Polar Park?
Uh, it might be me.
Hey. Sorry.
I do not have grand plans for.
We need to replace the playground.
It does, yeah, in the short term on here, that's the last one I think that we haven't addressed, it says playgrounds and trails, $173,000.
Yeah, that playground's the oldest one we have in the city.
Okay.
But it was in good condition when we built this, so it was actually still in okay shape, but again, it's not that grand of a playground, the swing set was new, it came from Casey Lake. Um, so there's like, it's got a lot of hodgepodge of newness, but the place center itself is older. It seems like a lot of money, but I think when we had discussed this, there was talks of putting actual sidewalks in there to connect from, I I think we have done that since, there's sidewalks in there now.
That should be done.
So I don't think you need 173, but I'd say if you want a decent playground, I'd put at least with edging 90,000 aside for that.
Yeah.
We do need to probably do that in the short term, knowing it's, again, it's, I think it's a 19, it's got a nine in that play structure.
It's one of our older ones.
93, 94, it's old.
One of our older ones, because I went in, we went in there a couple of years ago and walked through some of these parks, and that was one that we were concerned about the age.
And Polar Park's one of those that is kind of almost like landlocked. You don't have a lot of areas that get to, you got the one path.
Weird one, yeah.
Yeah, it's really got weird entrances.
Kind of fun, though, when you find it, my kids always thought that was really exciting, like, where'd this come from? And I have Colby Hills, which I didn't talk about, but I will say that after living there for two years around that area, I feel like I'm in a playground desert, like I, my kids and I don't go to parks that much anymore because we can't walk to any, and Colby Hills is close, but like Sue said, like, it's such a tiny structure. The problem is, it's got such a big building there, just nice, and there's a little patch of grass, but I don't really know what we would do with it. Like, as a person, I feel remiss, like, there's not something there, but I also don't know what we would do with it, so I didn't.
Couldn't we do something with that?
That grass lot?
Yeah, I mean, there could be, uh, I don't know the names of these games that they play.
Gaga Ball or something.
Those kinds, some simple, that wouldn't cost a buck of the money.
Say like simple park and, like, simple enhancement of that lot, maybe give it.
Maybe $50,000, you could do a lot with $50,000, I would think.
I don't even think we'd need that much.
Probably not.
25.
Great.
I mean, it seems kind of shameful not to have some.
My kids would love a Gaga pit.
Yeah.
We should just put one of those in every park, actually. They're probably like, I think they're like $400, but.
David?
Sarah, being that you're over there by Kobe, are they still flooding that vacant lot for skating?
They didn't last year.
They didn't?
They're not.
Okay, because that's, that was a big thing, that empty lot was always set up for ice skating, not hockey, but regular figure skating or whatever, recreational skating, so.
All right.
Well, Riley, do you have?
Riley, where do we go?
You think you need, do you have any other questions or?
I'm good.
Okay. That's all we got to do with that, touching on that, that's all you need from us today?
I think so, yeah, and then we'll, we'll work together on that.
Well done, everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you, Riley.
All right, park hours, discussion and recommendation.
So that was recommended by Cassidy, she's obviously not here, so if we want to talk about it while she's here, that would be my recommendation, since she will be bringing it back to council. So I would, that'd be my thought, would be next meeting, we can come back and have a deeper discussion on what we want to do with the park hours.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, park policy updates.
Again, this is, we can talk about it today if you'd want to, if you have questions or anything, but staff are recommending some updates to the park policy. Again, just for time, I would recommend tabling that till next time. The information in the packet, though, does include all the. The information in the packet, though, does include all the proposed changes, so I would ask that we, you all review it for next meeting, if there's questions or concerns, bring them back then, but we'd like to see that implemented before December 1st, if possible, so.
Okay.
But if you want to talk about it today, too, we can, but I would recommend.
Anybody want to talk about it?
I'd make a recommendation.
Table it.
Table it. Table it for next meeting.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Public works updates.
Not much there, just they completed a total park inventory to include like what we have for benches, picnic tables, signs, grills, anything else that stands out there as well as their condition, so we now have that. We're working to get that digitalized, so we can have that for future reference, but they did go through and make notes of that. I will say, the other thing that's not on here that I want to talk about is the open houses with HGA. I did email you all that information, but I also have little flyers that if you don't mind handing out to people that you know, that can come to these open houses and give their feedback on our park planning, that would be wonderful. That's all I got.
Now, do we have to monitor how many of us come to these?
The open houses?
Yes.
I do need to know if you're gonna make it and which days you're gonna make it.
Okay, for quorum issues.
Quorum issues, and then also, I believe Riley and I are not available both those nights, so we do need your representation.
We need a quorum both nights?
We talking the one, the two in October?
Yes.
Okay, I can be at the ninth.
And if we, if we do hit a quorum, I can, I'll email out and let you know.
I can do the ninth.
The same, it's a repeat.
Meeting, yep. So just, if we can just choose one to be at, that would be helpful.
Is somebody gonna be there, the open doors, or do we, you want us to do that?
I'm gonna be there on the, one of them. What is that?
I know, I have my notes downstairs, because some of you have told me.
Will you pass the flyer out?
Yeah.
I'm there on October 9th.
The dates are one more time?
October 9th, 5 to 7.
I'll be absent for both, Sarah.
Okay.
6 to 8.
Yeah, on, on the 9th, it's from 5 to 7. I'll get that one.
Ingrid, which one are you doing?
The 9th.
Okay, there's two for the 9th already.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm planning, I'm, I don't know what my wife's schedule for her surgeries and stuff are, but I'm planning on being on both.
So that's three for the 9th.
And then Sue, you had told me the 10th.
Yes.
Okay, so we got, we got enough for the, we can't have four, we can only have three, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we got three.
Pass them out. Okay, I.
Huh?
You can't do it either? Okay.
But Dave and Sue will be there on the 10th.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we got two.
So Ben, if you can come, the 10th would be great, if not, I think we have that park covered, we're gonna have council members there as well, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
So we got, we got enough for each of them.
Yep, and I'm working with them on opening doors, setting up tables, all that stuff, so we'll get that taken care of.
Sarah politely, politely reminded me the other day, I called her short notice and said, hey, I'd like to come to this, she goes, we can't, we got three already, we can't have four.
Yes.
Can't have four. Quorum.
Yeah, I was gonna say something else, but I don't need to say it.
Hmm, okay. All right, that's all I got.
All right, Riley, you got anything else?
Good.
All right, I'm gonna start with Ingrid. Anything, ports, updates, anything else?
Nope.
David?
We covered it already.
Okay, Sue?
Well, I just have to say that I thought I had Northwood Park.
Well, we can work together.
Okay.
We can work together, unless you hate my plan, and then you can't work.
No. I don't like the park very much.
Laura has a dream, likes my snowman.
It's just now my splash pad downtown park.
I'm good. Laura?
Uh, good.
Sarah?
Good.
Ben?
All good.
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
David makes a motion second.
You want me to announce?
Oh, okay, hold on. Is it on the record or off the record?
No.
Is this on the record or off? Okay, go ahead. Hold on, are you okay with that? We're gonna, yep, okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Um, I will be done with the commission at the end of the year.
Accepted.
I don't, I honestly can't, just can't do it anymore.
We think.
Can we leave the old guy here?
Yes. Yes.
It's been a pleasure, Sue.
Thank you.
That's so sad.
It's a pleasure for me, too, but I can't, I just can't do it anymore.
You're allowed to leave if you find us a good replacement. Just like you.
No?
Would like to invite you back, maybe in January, like we did with the other members that left for a little, thank you.
Well, I actually thought if you wanted to have a Christmas party this year, we could do it at my house.
Ooh.
So moved.
Stand by, stand by.
I second that.
Hold on, hold on.
If you would rather wait and do it in January, because sometimes that easy is easier after the holidays.
Let's talk after the meeting. Okay. All right, David?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody second?
Second.
Sarah seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?